Well, good morning and happy Friday morning on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm Noel Heinrich, Mayor of Danville. And today we're here for Town Talks and I'm joined today by Vice Mayor Robert Store. And as sort of the the tradition I started here a few months ago, we're going to start off a little video to kind of get us off to help have a conversation today about the goals in Danville. And a couple of sneak peeks of what's coming up and a little discussion about our upcoming exciting special events for the year. And with that, we'll start right here. Well, that's our start for this morning and that last news there was of the Danville Library. And as you know, St. Patrick's Day is on March seventeenth. I encourage you to drive by after sunset and check it out.
Yeah, what a cool town we live in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool town.
So, Robert, let's uh let's start off here. Um, first of all, the count, the town has had a tradition where the council meets every year for a council retreat to set about goals, what we're going to accomplish for the year, where we're headed, and a look back at what we accomplished so we can sort of determine how we guide ourselves going forward. And that just recently occurred. But before we do that, you know, I've always been asked, how'd you get involved? What what is it that drove you to do this? It's a job that doesn't really pay you. It costs you thousands of dollars personally on the council. How did you get involved and why?
Yes, funny, I've never been asked that question before. You know, interesting, over the course of, I've been involved in the building industry, I mean, literally thirty-eight years, four decades. And over the course of all those years, I made a lot of presentations about a planning commission for various projects, whether they were mine or other people's projects, I made presentations planning commission. And the one thing that I always noticed when I walked away, I thought they don't really know land use. They never really asked, you know, the questions that I thought they would ask me, you know, in your business. When we're before planning commission, we put together questions that we think we're going to get asked and we have answers. Over the course of years, nobody ever asked any question. In fact, I I I developed an eight-unit subdivision in San Leandro. And the only question the planning commission asked me that night was, are you going to connect to sewers? And I came home, I thought, what a ridiculous question. And I told Sanders, I could do this job. And by coincidence, I looked in a Danville paper one day, like a week later. I mean, that's how close it was. And here it was, we're recruiting for Tanville Planning Commissioners. And I thought, I could do this. I could, you know, I have a pretty strong back line on land use. I understand how to read a set of plans, which I think is really important when you're a planning commissioner. And I applied, in fact. That's how I met you the very first day of you guys were holding interviews. And I burst into the room when you were holding an interview and you corralled me and I got, hey, look, I got a lot to tell you. And you said, yeah, but you need to wait your turn and you escorted me outside, so I had to be patient. But I was excited about getting on the planning commission. I spent ten years on the planning commission. And I can tell you one thing, you learn about the town of Danville or any town or any community when you're on a commission, especially the planning commission.
Yeah. I was going to say it's the most complicated area of local government.
Agreed.
And I always say, as left-leaning as the state is, it's a property right state. And so that's that's the challenge that we're going to talk about that a little later in the program here.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
How about you? So how'd you get involved?
Well, yeah, very similarly, I, you know, my arc, my background is architecture. My wife actually saw it, I always wanted to be involved in my community like my father was. And she saw an advertisement in the paper to be on the Architectural Design Review Board. Well, lo and behold, there'd never been an architect. And I thought, well, gee, maybe there ought to be an architect on there. And toughest interviews, I had to go go for three interviews to get on that. And then from there, got on the planning commission and then eventually ran for council.
Yeah.
So, yeah, a journey and and most of us that are on the council, all of us have come from some kind of a background of that. And it really does help. So kind of exciting that we're here today.
One thing, I would put our planning commission up against any planning commission in the Bay Area, they're intelligent, they're thoughtful, and they ask the right questions. And it's a, it's a really, really well, really good group.
And I think, yeah, it's backed up and supported by a great planning staff, you know, David Crompton's our chief of planning. He was been with the town as long as I can, I think I've been around. And, you know, our town manager was our former head of our planning department, that's his background as well. And that goes back to the four Ps when Danville was founded, it was, you know, planning parks, public works, open space and police. And planning, you know, the rules in Danville make it difficult to plan. But when it, when the project gets done, it usually its outcome is really a pretty high level. And that's why sometimes people say it takes ten, twelve years to do particularly commercial projects. Yeah, it's it's difficult, but once you get through, you've got a really, really successful project.
Agreed.
So let's start with this.
Okay.
You know, we've gotten through the pandemic, you know, we're now, you know, the 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 feeling that we're through the pandemic or we're into an endemic now is because we see masking going away, schools as of next Friday, masking will go away. So things of, you know, Danville's fared. What's your impression, you know, from a council perspective? How is the town as a whole fair going through, you know, where we are today from this pandemic?
Yeah, well, and you know, let's let's back up, you know, to almost two years ago to the to the day when we were called into the conference room with with Joe Kelbrig, our town manager. And you could see the look on his face that this was, this wasn't going to be a great meeting. And at that meeting, we had to figure out how to how to remove three, five or seven million dollars from our budget. And these budgets, it's hard to take off two dollars. So we personally, I never thought we were going to be in this thing for two years because just there's no gates, there was no playbook. But well, the one thing we did do, and I think we did it really well, was we identified the problems that the town was going to have, especially with our downtown. You know, the downtown businesses, the retailers, the services, I mean, look, they're all shut down. To some of us, this this COVID has been a gigantic annoyance. To some, it's been, you know, life or death trying to make it through the the month. So coming out of this, you know, we, well, this was going into it, I mean, we basically put money downtown, I mean, you know, close to five hundred thousand dollars and divvied up some grants and, you know, put emergency ordinances in place with our outdoor parklets, which I think saved most of our restaurants. And as you know, because you were here in the nineties, you know, plywood on those buildings downtown had not a good look. I think we had forty percent vacancy at that time. We've seen what plywood on the walls look like recently, all for a different reason, but still plywood on the walls are still plywood on the walls and it's not a good look. Coming out of this, you know, we're going to look at this, you know, again, you know, we're we're going to have this downtown, you know, business plan. Can we go into that for a little bit too? Because that's really kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Through our.
Yeah, I was going to say. Oh, go ahead. It's just, we've had a delay on your side, Robert, so I'll I'll try not to talk over you, I'll be quiet for a second. But let me go on to take off on what you just said. So through the pandemic, as we looked back, we see obviously certain businesses really hurt. Home improvement, grocery stores, drugstores, those types of venues, their sales have been through the roof, no question. Construction, home remodeling, through the roof, the greatest noises we've ever seen. But as you know, when you look at, you know, something just like dry cleaners, laundry facilities, you know, they dropped down to nothing for a long period of time before they were allowed to open. And once they did, they were barely at twenty-five percent. And from sort of just a a street view conversation with some of our local vendors, they're forty, fifty percent. But we see restaurants. And I think because of the half a million dollars in grants, the half a million dollars we spent on top of that, that nearly one million dollars of putting all those those assets in our downtown and even in the shopping centers, that restaurants, for the most part, most of them are up there at twenty nineteen levels. This takes us to, we're now have, and we had a show on this last time where we talked about the downtown master plan. So is this something new? Do we do this every so often? What's sort of the context and where do you think we're heading with our downtown master?
Well, that's really exciting because when we did our council retreat, as you know, every month we have a study session. We spend four hours going through, you know, topics and ordinances and we direct staff with with policy, you know, decision. And then once a year, we do our, we do our our council retreat, which is, you know, an opportunity for, you know, for us to hear from all of our directors, all their the goods, their challenges that are taking place. And we were able to look at, you know, our accomplishments the past year. And then we had an opportunity to talk about our downtown master plan and we hired a consultant, SWA. They are been incredible to work with. And you know, what's exciting is now we're going to look at our downtown, not just today and tomorrow. And certainly where we've come from through this this COVID crisis, we're here today, we're in a much better position. And the future looks really exciting for the downtown because we're going to things we haven't really considered before. And we have, you know, as as our town manager would say, there are no bad decisions here, there are no bad questions. You just throw everything at this, we can, and we're going to throw as many ideas as we can into this. And we're going to come out with, I think, what the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years looks like in the town of Danville.
And it's exciting, you know, we did a survey to get community engagement. And I think today it's probably our largest engagement survey. We had nearly one thousand five hundred participants who gave us their ideas, their likes, things they'd like to see downtown. And that's really exciting. But also there was a homework assignment. We have over fifty volunteers that serve on our planning commission, including our town council. And didn't we have an assignment? We had to go around downtown. So what did you do on your walkabout? And tell me what your highlights were, what what did you like? What would you, what didn't you like that you walked around saying?
Yeah, you know, so I started at the library. And, you know, I always think that's just a cool spot. And you know, it was Henry Peros Alonso says, that's Danville's living room. I've always thought that was kind of a cool way of looking at it because, you know, that's a place where people congregate, they meet. You know, we're looking at, you know, our sort of a master plan down in our in that area as well. You know, the whole front street, I mean, kind of a cool street on the creek, you know, we've got parking there, we've got our town hall, the village theater. And I always think that's such a really neat part of town that we should maybe make, you know, put more focus on. And so I started there and, you know, walking around town, I mean, I can never get tired of walking around town. I mean, you talk to the business owners and, you know, we know a lot of them. And you talk, you run into people, walking downtown is so much fun to me that I could do it every single day. And, you know, certainly the weekends, we do a lot. But I started there and then I went over to the north end. You know, that over the years, I think historically, we've always thought that maybe we could use a little help down there. And there were some cool spots along the way that I thought, you know, you get some of these these openings that go into alleyways and have, you know, metal wrought iron, you know, decorations. And I thought, you know, I sort of focused on some of the things you find along the way when you're walking through downtown Danville, but I thought would be kind of important. How did you do?
You know, I did the same thing. I I actually love the the town green, as we call it, the library. And I went up all the way up Front Street, cut over and I kind of zigzagged. And I think what I saw was what you did was, when you look at the open, the openings between buildings that are pathways, some are obvious, some aren't. For example, Valley Medallions. And there's Eyes on Hearts there and then there's Kicking Meal. There's a really cool opening that goes to the parking lot there. Now, it's kind of no man's land because the town doesn't own it. But there's an opportunity to improve that, to create it as one of these wonderful walking environments that draws you back there. Like the one that's on the east side of the senior center between the Williams Building there on Prospect, that connects from Prospect Avenue to our Front Street parking lot. We can do more of those. And I think particularly you look at behind or off to the right-hand side as you're facing Forward in Motion Sports. It looks like a driveway and it is. But when you get back to this, this really cool little walkway that goes up in elevation and it goes into the parking lot. The Fountain, Prospect Plaza next to Starbucks, I think more of those kinds of gathering spaces. We all, I think we all do it and I know you're guilty of it. When I have relatives or friends come into Danville, the first thing I do, we we walk downtown and we walk the whole the whole area. Tell them the history and things like that. And I think that's just that community celebration that draws us down there.
Yeah, and I agree. And when when I went through Prospect and, you know, when you get to Hearts and Prospect and you look towards Mount Diablo, it's such a pretty view. And I'm walking past La Condo of Villa, I love the way they've actually taken up, you know, seats and chairs and and on the properties adjacent to them. It feels like you're in Little Italy.
Temporarily, just remember, that's temporarily.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, but but right now I'm enjoying it because it's it's there. You know, and then you you walk up Hearts and it's just, there's something about it, all the street trees are gorgeous. And I thought, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we had some lights in these trees? And I sort of made a little mental note of that, thinking, geez, we could light this up. What we need downtown is a synergy after hours. And that's what this consultant is going to help us get to. What does that look like? You know, there's some parts, like I said, we don't want to be Walnut Creek, and I get that. We don't want to be Dublin because we're Danville. But there's some things in Walnut Creek before the COVID hit that they had pockets in their downtown where people would congregate, you know, they have dinner, they would enjoy the downtown. There was a synergy that we were missing here in Danville and that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it ties into the other plan, it's our town green master plan, the arts district. So Front Street, if you look at the banners, they look different than all the other banners. So they don't have seasonal banners, they're about arts because we have the village theater, we have the community center, we have the library. And as you know, coming up, I'll just look up the date, it's August sixth. We'll have music in the park and we've tried to have one of those, you know, hopefully one day they'll all be there. Because with the new Village Theater parking lot synergy in downtown, there's enough parking for people to attend. And the improvements that are proposed, it's a long-range plan, it's probably going to take us six to seven years to get to it. But the improvements that will make that arts district, there's a small little wood building across the creek that the town owns. You know, things like maybe putting a public restroom in there, but a maker space for artists, a place to sell local artwork and other artistic improvements to create a gathering place. I think that that goes hand in hand with our downtown master plan. And I know SWA, our consultants, are making sure that they're coordinating with that so that we complement each other as we do that.
I think, Neil, when we were looking at the library and, you know, our town green area, you know, some people don't know this, but we own that that little piece of that little house next door. You know, and that's where you sort of referenced, you know, that, you know, in Monterey, there's a place that is actually very similar to that little house, about same size. And they have a co-op, you know, artists, basically, I think they pay some rent, but they but they show all their artwork. And there's like forty-five artists that actually in a co-op sort of setting, put all their artwork in there. And here we have this art district. Yeah, I'm hoping that it's something art-related when we're moving down the road and it's a perfect opportunity. We just got to save a little bit of money because we just, you know, we just came out of a difficult time. And it'll take us, you know, a period of time to get there, but we'll get there.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, the council also highlighted, we've had some really great partnerships with the community. And for example, out at Diablo Vista Park in East Danville, there's been a a soccer field that we had partnered originally with Mustang Soccer and they came back to us and said, hey, we'd like to help improve another field. So just recently, their support in the town of Danville, we just put new lighting. So we now have two lighted soccer fields out there. And along the way, I know one of your favorite projects, projects, Robert, is over at the Bounty Garden at Happy G Ranch Park. And maybe even talk, describe a little bit about what that looks like and how that runs. I know it's community-based.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, before I do that, thank you, Sports Alliance, for helping put those lights in the park. I mean, who does that? I mean, here we are, we're trying to partner, as you know, we partner with a lot of people. They came up with money and actually guided this whole process and thanks to those town staff and the sports line, we have lights on on a field now, which is really cool. So Bounty Garden, I always thought that was such a wonderful concept. And there was a mother-daughter, the Abrinsons, mother-daughter team, that came up with this concept that they would, you know, plant vegetables and they would, you know, use it for the community, community-based garden. And at the time on the council, we're thought, well, I know some mother-daughter thing here, can they sustain this? But the idea was so much fun that we thought, gee, what do we got to lose here? Let's, you know, they're going to develop it, they're going to, they're going to create it and they're going to run it. And then fortunately, they were, they were sharp enough to actually create, I think it's a five oh one C three. Or they have sort of a a foundation that actually with volunteers. God bless these volunteers that keep that thing going. They've expanded it now. There, I mean, it's wonderful and the food helps seniors, it goes to the food bank. I mean, I don't know, it just, one of those things you think, a mother-daughter thought it up. And here we are, I I bet it's been eight or nine years, I mean, maybe even a little bit longer.
Yeah, as long as than that, yeah.
Oh, amazing. So and here we are, and it's still being sustained. So wonderful, wonderful idea.
Yeah, and we're just doing an expansion out there, you know, it's it's the original barn that was on the ranch that was there that we've done a variety of steps of not only building the planters, the raised planters, but the barns, we've restored one, we're now doing the second one. So, you know, for those watching, if you haven't had a chance to get out there and take a look at Happy G Ranch Park, walk through the park as you head towards the creek, going westward, you'll see the bridge and then you'll see the barn out there, it's pretty cool. A couple of other things on, you know, master plans, as you know, we've just completed the age-friendly roadmap by our our senior commission that, God bless them, during COVID, it was challenging because we had just created that commission. And now we have that. And what's the other commission, Robert? Tell us what we just approved. Be looking for members, we'll be interviewing here coming up in May and June.
Yeah, well, as you know, over the years, we've put a lot of attention to bicycle safety. And I think it started with the Happy G Ranch development on Diablo Road and bicyclists trying to get up to Mount Diablo safely. And, you know, as a town, you know, we were looking at how to, you know, put bicycle paths, you know, that's the green striping that, you know, in fact, we actually approved striping that goes from Hearts all the way to, I think it's almost Julian. And we had to re-aspall streets, seal them, put bicycle safety in place. And then we thought, Jesus, you know, it'd be nice if we had a bicycle commission. And I'm really excited about putting this together. And Al Kalin, I think, has been a very strong voice, sort of, you know, just beating the drums. You know, we need to, we need bicycle safety, we need bicycle safety. And over the course of, you know, but through the least through the pandemic, that's going to be exciting to see that because they're going to be involved in a lot of really neat projects coming up.
Yeah, and I think that goes along with our concept of complete streets. And that concept is is about moving people, vehicles, bicycles, and everybody in the safest way so that every project, we're not just looking at at streets, we're not just looking at trails or bicycles, we're looking at them all together to produce the best, which is also how we got that you'll see sometimes when you come to a stoplight now, if you look to the right, even though you might be in a car, if a bicyclist is around, there's a blue light with a bicycle symbol that comes on at the light pole that says, I sent you. What it means is the traffic signals knows that there's a bicyclist, so it changes the timing there and so that they can safely move through. So it's those kinds of things that are pretty exciting. But what else? There was one thing that council, you know, when we we worked with Caltrans and Contra Costa Transportation Authority to put in the auxiliary lanes and those auxiliary lanes on commuter Ramon had a huge impact. So the sound wall had to move over, had to take out all the landscaping. And we're really fortunate to negotiate and get in this really beautiful mature landscaping. But in the course of time, we didn't really touch the road because of all the construction. Well, guess what? Now coming up, we're repaving that entire road all the way from Sycamore Valley all the way down to Greenbrook on that direction. And as well as we're also doing San Juan Valley Boulevard. And Robert, describe, how do we plan these projects and is there a relationship to schools and things like that?
Oh, yeah, so, you know, when we do a capital improvement project, I mean, it's, we're here again in May. We have four budget sessions and we go through, you know, not only our finances, but capital improvement projects. And the town of Danville has 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 done this really well. We identify a need, we actually figure out how to fund it, partially fund it and fund it entirely. And it becomes, you know, a a project at some point. And along the way, you know, we're 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 working with, you know, the stakeholders, whoever is involved in those particular capital improvement project, you know, we're reaching out to them and we have some wonderful partnerships in this town. I don't know if that answered your question, but, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do, we put projects on on the board. And then we figure out how to fund them and then we figure out how to complete them. And, you know, look how many projects we have going up and going right now, even through COVID. You know, the message that we sent to our community was, look, the world is shut down. And I know that our town offices are shut down, but we're not shut down as as a business. The town of Danville, you know, was working the whole time. And as a council and as a staff, we were working the whole time during COVID to put these projects in place because we knew one day we're going to come out of this mess. And, you know, we'd have to, we have to resume life again. So we've been playing that since for about for about two years.
Absolutely. We also, one of the things we 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 try to be really conscious about when we do particularly street projects is to try to force all those projects to happen as much as we can during the school recess. So when school is out, I think around June third of this year and before they start in mid-秋, we've we've lined up our contracts, all the folks to get in there and try to do that. Because as we know, our schools here in Danville are neighborhood schools. So the impact on schools and traffic is pretty extensive. So let's.
I think Happy G Ranch is a classic example, you know, they actually are waiting to do the underground to for the school year to end on Diablo Road. So to be less disruptive, we're real sensitive to the school district bell schedules.
Absolutely. So let's switch subjects. So one of our other goals has been about safety. As we've seen Proposition forty-seven that passed in California and largely most communities were duped by that. And that's where if somebody comes in and robs your house and the value of the standard for a felony, which would cause an arrest, it got lower to nine hundred and fifty dollars, but it's based on the value, not what you paid for it. So you could steal an iPhone or laptop and it's going to be under nine hundred and fifty dollars. And in Danville, like all communities, we're forced to give them a ticket. And right there on the spot, then you could, you could be standing there as the homeowner. And 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 we sat along with our chief of police, we, that's not acceptable, what can we do? So it's either hire more police officers or what? We invested in technology. And how have those investments turned out, Robert? Maybe you can describe one.
When when we first sat down and looked at cameras throughout town, I believe I got Proposition forty-seven, as you recall, let out almost a thousand prisoners the next day after after Proposition forty-seven passed. And by coincidence, we had nine burglaries or seven burglaries in Greenbrook, literally within the next week. Now, I know it's a coincidence and maybe I'm connecting too many dots here. But over the course of, you know, about a year and a half, we looked at, hey, what can we do with with technology in Danville? So we came up with this, I thought was a brilliant idea of putting, you know, cameras on all four intersections going into town, coming out of town so that there literally wasn't a place you can come in or go out that you wouldn't be picked up on a camera. And actually, when you're a felon, sometimes you drive cars that have plates that have your name on it. And when your name comes up and we know that you're a felon, our police department immediately, you know, tries to figure out where you're at in town and we know this by GPS and, you know, and we make an arrest. I think, state, I've always held on to fifty-six felon arrests over the course of about fourteen months. I'm sure it's higher today, but, you know, it's it's done, it's done its job. It is actually been really good. And the other thing that's been interesting, you know, body cams. I think it's a minimum requirement for police officers to have a body cam. Apparently, a lot of jurisdictions don't have the body cam. We used to have, we used to have videos on our tasers. We don't have video and cameras anymore, a taser. What we have now is a button. When a taser comes out of a holster, it actually turns on my camera. And then it turns on all the cameras within a hundred feet. So we get multiple perspectives on any one incident. You know, and with law enforcement, you know, over the years, having some challenges, I mean, this has been a really good tool in the toolbox that helps our officers and helps the public. So it's it's full transparency.
Absolutely, it's good for everybody. Just to have one. Absolutely. It's good for everybody. Uh, just to have one small example is, um, soon after. So our, we have license plate readers. We have, um, um, high definition situational cameras. And we're actually, the council's now approved onto the, we have the second phase of those, another generation. But soon after we put those in, we had a, um, a burglary in Greenbrook area. And it was in the afternoon during the week and police showed up there. A neighbor said, hey, somebody I think broke into the house. They verified it and the person that said, I think I saw a white car. So our system was so robust, they went back. They typed in and, and I'll be honest, they probably took out the Danville license plates, just to try to start with something. And it turns out there was one white car that fit that description. They were able to get the license plate. Turns out that car was from Stockton. The system said the car was already back in Stockton. It's a few hours later. They called Stockton PD. Stockton PD drove over to the site. Get to the driveway, they see the car, they look in the car. They saw the items that they had a description that was stolen. They knocked on the door and made an arrest. That's all in a matter of hours. And if you look nationwide, you know, um, barely eleven percent of all crimes. So you have almost a ninety percent chance of getting away with crimes in our county. We probably are about seventeen percent. In Danville, we run forty to sixty percent of not only solving crimes. But in also, um, recovering stolen property.
Much, much higher, much, much higher than the national average.
So that means we, that, that has gotten us to be, um, one of the safe, well, the safest city. Um, in the state of California in the past four years and over the past decade or so, we've been in the top ten. So.
Yeah, what's interesting to note is that our police chiefs have actually, you know, and I'll use, um, Alan Shields and Steve Sinkin for sure. Because both of them went to the school districts, partnered with, you know, the coffees with the cop. They took the, they, they make young kids feel comfortable around police and, uh, you know, the police have done. Our cops have done everything they can to engage the public and, and show that they heard it, that they do care. And they are involved in our VIP. God bless those volunteers. Uh, they, they do incredible work. They drive their cars around. They park the cars as, you know, in, in town, you know, while, while they're, while they're walking around. So we have a, a larger police presence. And I'm really proud of the fact that we are, you know, one of the safest cities in California.
Absolutely. Um, and I was going to say that, um, the council does all of its budgeting in the month of, uh. May, we meet, um, um, every week, um, do a deep dive through the budget, um, and sometimes into June. But one of the things, um, we're going to probably have a presentation is from our, uh, chief of police on a new technology. And that technology would be the first thing in the United States that might be able to be deployed here to help make our community even safer. And what I think, like you, Robert, and all of our fellow council members are, I'm really proud that people here embrace technology. And, and I've always used the saying that, you know, Silicon Valley sleeps in vandal. What I mean by that is, is so many people here that, that live here, work in Silicon Valley or evolve in high tech. And it's a natural course of things to say, well, yeah, we want to use technology to make things safe. So some exciting things. So.
Our police chief, our police chief will tell you that this public private partnership with the police department and our citizens is invaluable. The phone calls that we get, you know, the, the suspicious cars in the neighborhood, whatever the call is, our police respond. And then when there's an incident, I mean, we have a lot of homes that have cameras and those cameras have been, you know, instrumental in solving a, a lot of crime. Because there, there's a whole nother perspective on it and people are happy to work with our police department and I'm, I'm proud of that as well.
Right. So this is, we've sort of been talking about kind of a highlight. We're going to shift here. But what's exciting, there are really great things that are happening in Danville. The year coming up, focusing on downtown. Um, but we also have the state of California and even during the pandemic. You would think they might have lit up on local government. So there are some challenges based on a lot of laws that they passed. And, um, we're going to now ask, uh, we're going to bring in, uh, David Crompton, our chief of planning and Cat Bravo. Our administrative analysis, and we're going to talk about our state mandated housing element. And just to tee that up, what that means is the state of California for, for many years. Um, has had what's called, the acronym is called RENA, RENA numbers, Regional Housing Allocation Numbers. And every city and county in the state of California participates in that. And that's been a state law way back from, um, over fifty years ago. And Danville has always met those standards. And what most people don't know is we've had for twenty seven, twenty eight years. An affordable housing, um, element called an inclusionary housing element. And what that meant was fifteen percent of all homes that have been built in Danville. For these past two, nearly three decades, fifteen percent were affordable. But where are they? Well, you don't see that. The reason why is Danville standards and how we do that through design, it's the smaller lot, maybe the smaller house. Things like that, that have created opportunities to do that. And it's always worked for Danville. But what happened? SB nine came along last year. We fought that tooth and nail. Along with all the cities, all four hundred and eighty-two cities in the state of California, along in partnership with the League of California Cities. But there's one gentleman, um, State Senator, um, Scott Weiner, who has been. You know, the, the belief that he knows everything about housing, um, and believes that it's cities' faults that we don't have affordable housing. He's ignored all of the facts of the Great Recession when we had more housing we needed, where anybody could buy housing without a credit report, without a down payment. And then the banking laws that have changed has made it so difficult. And then a whole long list of things that have happened. But we're stuck. So we have to provide two thousand two hundred and forty-one affordable homes over that. When I said, let me, let me fix that. We don't have to provide for it. We have to provide the opportunity through zoning. Town of Danville doesn't build housing and most cities don't. We're not in that business. But the state is forcing this. And if we don't do it. And we, we went, we appealed this and we lost with other cities. If we don't do this, they will fine us upwards of a million dollars a month. But that's not enough. Attorney General Bonta has now hired a group of nearly eighty attorneys to come after cities. That don't follow compliance and they have said they would decertify us. And what that means is, is they would actually come in through the state legislature and the town of Danville. In one fell swoop would not exist. All of our assets would be turned over to the county, the county, and we'd become under county rule again. And there'd be no local government. So we are being forced. And we're trying to do it in the best way possible that fits Danville standards. And David, I'm going to hand it over to you and let you and Kat give us a little, a little look to what's coming up and particularly what's coming up on Monday. Robert, I'm sorry.
Before David starts, let, let me just say one thing, you know, over the course, I don't want people to think that we haven't tried to do our best. To put affordable housing together. And as you know, we have one, one part of town, right there off of Hart's Way and Laurel. That we have a hundred units of affordable housing. You wouldn't know it by driving by it because of standard in Danville. We felt the bar, the bar so high architecturally that, you know, with this, this idea of, I keep hearing about stack impact. Show me where we have stack impact anywhere in this, in, in our community. We just don't do that. What we do, we tastefully, you know, build affordable housing for seniors. Uh, downtown and we have done that fifteen percent inclusionary, long as I, I think you've been here for all your time, certainly all my time. So we know that it's important that we have different levels of, of income requirements. So we have apartments, we have condos. We have things you could buy. We have high-end homes, we have lower-end home. And to your point, Greenbrook is probably the best example of a. Of a, an affordable housing master plan and it was built in the seventies.
Absolutely. So Dave, you guys and your staff have done a great job over these years. We've always been in compliance. In fact, we were the first city in Contra Costa County to have a, uh, an approved, um, housing element. Now we're being forced to do another one. And we have some challenges. So how are we dealing with it and what's coming up?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Honrich and Vice Mayor Store and good morning to all the viewers. I'm going to kind of give a little bit of a overview of where we are and then I'm going to turn it over to Kat to talk about our upcoming outreach efforts. So yeah, as you mentioned, we're, we're dealing with our next housing element. Housing element law has been around in California since nineteen sixty-nine. And they run on eight-year cycles. And so this is coming up is, uh, the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element. Um, which is the sixth housing element cycle, uh, for, for us. So as you mentioned, uh, the housing numbers come from the state of California and they, they. Uh, assign those to local governments and to regional governments. And so our regional government is ABAG. And California signed, um, two thousand two hundred and forty-one, was it four thousand four, two thousand two hundred and forty-one? Thousand units to ABAG. So that's the, the nine counties and the hundred and one cities in the Bay Area. And then ABAG went through a process where they came up with a methodology for how to split up those numbers and assign them to the individual cities and counties. And they signed the town of Danville, two thousand two hundred and forty-one units and the, um, the, the Bay Area number was, was four hundred and forty-one thousand. Um, totally in this. And so now it's up to the local jurisdictions to come up with a plan for how we're going to accommodate those units. So we've been working on this for probably about a year and a half now. And doing a lot of the kind of behind the scenes work, but really the, the heavy lifting, um, is coming forward with how we are going to. Find individuals sites throughout town, you know, since we don't have a lot of vacant, developable sites, we're going to have to find lands that we can re-designate for. Multi-family housing and, uh, and that's a, you know, the two thousand two hundred and forty-one is a lot of units. So what we've done. Well, of course, the last year is what we've called our Housing Element One O One workshops, which are really educational about what a housing element is. And what the process is going to be and information about the state legislation as far as what we are mandated to do with our housing element. And so we're, we're entering now our second phase, which is going to be, um, a little bit more interactive with the public. Um, as far as helping us identify what, um, our community thinks might be the most appropriate sites for, uh, the, the housing. And, um, this process is all going to cum- accumulate, um, towards the end of this year and in early twenty twenty-three. When we have to have a, a housing element that's sent to the state for certification. So I'm going to turn it over to Kat just to, uh, talk about what we are going to be unveiling next week and, um. And, uh, we'll have some, some more public outreach coming in the months to come, but, um, Kat, you want to talk about what we have coming up next?
Uh, just before Kat, I'm sorry, uh, just let you know, we're going to do a deep dive in this. So next month, this is the program. Um, but the reason why we're doing a little sneak peek, this is about community engagement. Um, obviously, we probably have the same feelings as everybody in this community. We're shocked by this, but we got to find a way to do this. We're not going to give up on what we have built to build Danville and one of the safest communities, one of the nicest communities. And in fact, the reason why our assignment normally we're in the range of about five, five hundred and fifty units. And it always, we've always met that. But we are what they call a resource-rich community, which means we built such a nice community. They want to give it to everybody else and, and that's a crude way to say it. And Kat's going to now tell us a way that all of you who are listening here and our fellow residents can get involved. Kat?
Thank you and good morning, everybody. So I am starting off by, um. Showing my screen. I'm just going to go back to what David was saying. We are moving into our engagement phase of community outreach. And this consists of a two-part, uh, tool, uh, two-part process. So the first process, uh, part in the tool. Is going to be launched on Monday. This is our housing site suggestion map. Um, and this is a really simple tool that the public can use to drop pins on sites that they think are. Opportunities for us to plan for future housing. Um, that will be available for a month. And then following that, you know, we will take that down and our technical staff will do analysis of the sites. Uh, because not any site can be used for housing. There is a specific criteria list that a site has to. Pass in order to be viable for housing. So we will do an analysis of that. And then any viable sites that come back, we will incorporate that into our second part. Um, of the process, which will be a second simulation tool called Balancing Act. Um, so that's just an overview of what we're looking forward to. And I am going to go ahead and, uh, share our housing site suggestion map. Um, so this is a map that, like I said, um, anybody can access. It's going to live on the project page, the housing project page. Of the Town Talks website. Um, and basically, uh, you can navigate, um, you know, move the map around. You can click on a specific parcel and you will see any data that we have available, including the parcel ID. The site address and acreage. When you have a site that you would like to suggest, it's just as simple as grabbing the site suggestion marker, carrying it over to the site. And then you can add comments, you can add an image, um, to expand more on why, uh, you are suggesting this site. And the great thing about this is that you don't actually have to be registered for the site. Um, but you do have to provide your email address and a screen name in order to successfully submit the site. And there's no limit on how many sites an individual person can suggest. So, um. Once it launches, you may be the first person and you won't see any other pins. Um, but as pins get dropped, you know, you can come in, you can filter your search. Um, you can look at an activity feed, uh, that will show anything that's happened, um, in chronological order. And then the other great thing about this tool is that it's actually accessible on your desktop, but it's also accessible on any smartphone or tablet. So, you know, if you're walking out and about and you find a site that you think is great, you can actually toggle to your current location. Um, or you can search by a specific address. And this is limited. You can only drop pins on, uh, parcels. That are part of Incorporated Danville as that is our jurisdiction, um, for housing. And then, as I mentioned before, any site that is suggested is going to be, um, evaluated against the site criteria. So I'm just going to go back to my PowerPoint, um. To give a little insight into that. We don't expect the public to, um, know. Everything about what makes a viable site. Um, but some things to consider is the parcel size. The existing use on the property and then access to transportation. Um, and then lastly, I want to close out with just reminding the public that we have the great, a really great site, Danville Town Talks. Um, that allows the public, it's a two-way communication tool. You can ask us questions that we will answer directly. Um, you can, you know, we, we will also have workshops specifically for housing two oh one to learn about site opportunities. And we have three Zoom, uh, workshops, March ninth, March twenty-sixth, March twenty-eighth. And you can register for those from the Town Talks website. Um, and then we'll also have an in-person workshop on March twenty-sixth. At the Veterans Memorial Building. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Uh, Kat, thank you for that. Um, and I'm just going to note that you will not, um, see the council members participating in those events. And the reason why is this is for public input. And since we're ultimately the decision makers. Uh, we're not allowed to really participate in that so that we don't, um, um, inadvertently say what I like or don't like. Or another council member and, um, that. So that's part of our Brown Act that we have to follow. Um, and, um, those dates are really important. Uh, this is, this is clearly the biggest challenge Danville's faced. I would say in its history. But the only thing I can say is, is we're going to do it in a way that absolutely fits Danville. We have some challenges. When you look at the numbers, because of, of our past history of how we've, we've done it. Our general plan originally called for us to be built out in the year twenty twenty, which we were. Danville has eighteen square miles and forty-three percent permanent open space. Which means almost, almost eight square miles of the eighteen are open space. And the rest of Danville is single-family homes and we have just a little over four hundred apartments. That's it. So it, it is a real challenge. There's opportunities, particularly on, on certain cores and commercial areas. That, um, are underdeveloped, but this was not Danville's vision. Um, and, uh, we're going to answer some questions that we've gotten in the chat and sent to us about that. So I do want to thank.
I think it's really important to emphasize two things. One is, this is not our vision for Danville. This is the state's vision for Danville and frankly, all four hundred and eighty-three cities in California. They're all in this the same way we are. And the second thing is, is we live in a pretty cool community where forty-three percent of our. Now, that's not even counting Mount Diablo and Los Angeles. That's just the eighteen square miles that we, we live on. The twelve thousand acres, forty-three percent of it is deed restricted into perpetuity, open space. It's amazing.
Yeah. So how can you help? Help by participating. But I'm going to give you a political statement. Um, a gentleman I met, um, at, um, the California League of Cities when, uh, mayors and council members met. Uh, we have an annual meeting. Um, it's Mayor, uh, Bill Brandt of Redondo Beach. Um, Redondo Beach, as you know, is a resort community. And, uh, one of the bills, um, that was passed of the, the. Over the past few years, um, had a dramatic impact on building four-story buildings. had a dramatic impact on building four-story buildings in single-family neighborhood. And he and others like ourselves were all upset. And they came up and it's now um, it's circling. It's called Our Voices Initiative. And it takes nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand signatures um to get qualified. If you see that, figure out how to sign up. It will prevent the state of California. It will undo the S B nines and all of these things that are forcing and taking away local control. I'll leave it to you. It's your choice. I hope you'll look at it. Our Voices Initiative. I wanna thank Kat and David. You're both gonna be back when we're on here next uh month talking uh about a deep dive and we'll also have some information reported out on that. So thank you for sharing. Um, so now we've got uh just about nine minutes left here and we're gonna go through a couple of questions. And um, you know, one of the first question I had, what is our biggest challenges? Challenges this year? It's just what we were talking about.
One hundred percent housing element.
Right. We're good at, we're good at um knowing how to keep Danville safe. We're good at knowing how to um help uh support our businesses in great partnership with our business community and particularly the Chamber of Commerce. Um, this is our biggest challenge. And um, um, a second question was, uh, and this is very unique, Anderson Ranch Open Space. This is open space and David, I'm gonna ask you to come back on for a second. Um, is um, it's a permanent open space. The neighborhood was built, the development's a beautiful place to live in, but their open space is permanent open space. But it's been sold a couple of times. How can that happen and what's going on?
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Um. Danville since incorporation has done a lot of what we call the P one plan unit development rezonings, where we take the development potential of a property and we cluster the, all the homes down along the valley floor along the boulevard. And we preserve the hillsides and ridge lines as space. And so this uh, this uh was a project that was approved back in the nineteen eighties and that same contact concept was applied. It was the product, the development was clustered and the remainder was open space. Um, usually the open space goes to an entity such as, you know, a public agency, maybe State Regional Parks or is owned and maintained by a homeowners association. And for some unknown reason, this particular piece of property remained in the hands of the original developer. And ultimately, there was a tax default on it. It entered up for sale at the courthouse and it was bought by a private individual. And it has changed hands several times over the years since then. And we always get calls when it's on the market and we tell potential buyers that this is open space. It's general plan is open space. You can't do anything with it. You can't even build one home on it. You can't even build uh, you know, barns or anything else on it. So why would you wanna buy this? Uh, but there seems like there's always somebody that wants to take a chance, that they can buy it and they can change the rules and and do something with it. So I understand it has changed hands against here not too long ago and uh answer's still the same. It's open space and nothing to be done with it.
Period. Thank you.
That's actually by law that there is no such thing as development on any open space as far as I'm I'm aware of. I tried to buy an open space once for four acres. I wanted to put a horse on it or a couple of horses. I couldn't build a fence. I couldn't build a gazebo. I couldn't even build a tack room. You can't build anything on deed restricted open space. It's like this, this guy owns basically, whatever number of acres it is, just basically grassland.
Yeah. And 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 you know, there are variations to that, but largely it's intended to be open space. And that's the beauty. I mean, we live in Danville. We live in a valley. You know, we have the majestic um Mount Diablo on one side, Los Trumpes rising on the other. You know, we're in open space and it's part of who we are with the creeks that run through here. Um, that's our character. So that's pretty cool. So here's another one, and maybe David, you might wanna stick around on this one. And this is a question from uh Scott. And what he's talking about is they live in an H O A and the provision in their H O A prevent lots under one and a half acres and one house per plot, but S B nine seems to create an exception. We now have one property and it's listed their home and indicated you can have two lots subdivided and four homes. Now legally, from the town's perspective, people don't realize this, but HOAs are not recognized by public entity. But it doesn't mean that you don't have a deed restriction on your property. So while the town can't look to those standards in an H O A, we have to follow the the standards that we have here in Danville and state standards, but they still must comply with their H O A. David, you wanna make any comments on that?
Sure. Yeah. So what, you know, what you're talking about here is S B nine and S B nine went into effect on January first of this year. And basically says that if you are zoned for residential use, that you can subdivide, you know, almost in any circumstance, you can subdivide your property. And you could also build up to two, two primary residences, two single-family homes on each parcel. And that's done at what we call ministerial level. There's no public notification. There's no discretion. There's no, you know, public review. So, you know, it is interesting uh regarding the H O A involvement in these cases. We, you know, we as I think, we talked about with the new A D U laws that went into place, the state law specifically preempted uh any local laws or rules such as uh C C N Rs or homeowners associations rules and you can build A D U. But it doesn't say that about S B nine. And so our take on it and other cities takes at this point is that if you are in an H O A that prohibits that and if the H O A wants to enforce those C C N Rs, then uh you can, you you can do that. So um, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's good. And I think that's something that HOAs need to make sure they re-review. But also, one of the biggest things you can do, as I mentioned earlier, Our Voices Initiative, um, that would um help protect our community, um, if we can get that on the ballot, get it passed.
It would be nice if people encouraged, you encourage them to do that, but we need nine hundred and like ninety-seven thousand signatures on this. So we really would like people to get involved with that.
Right. Um, and we have a, we had a question from Greg Hardy. Um, can you elaborate on the new technology that I mentioned? That might be here in the town of Danville. Uh, no, I tell you why, because the council hasn't seen it. I've noticing that I've just seen a little bit of people working and trying to look into this. I'd heard about it. Um, but as it comes forward to the council, if it makes it that far and the technology seems viable, um, there'll be an announcement about that. And if it actually is something we're going to uh deploy, it would actually go to a public hearing and come through there. Um, but there is, there's a lot of exciting things. Not only we see advanced technologies in transportation um in um keeping cities safe, there's a lot of great um things that are happening there. So with that, Robert, I'm gonna leave it with you. Um, we have just um barely a minute here. What we have, uh, we have wonderful events here. We have Danville Summer Fest. That's June twenty-sixth and twenty-fifth. The Kwanis Fourth of July Parade is back. These are all live. There's no restrictions at this point in time. Hot, hot summer Sunday shows, July seventeenth and the twenty-first. We mentioned Music in the Park on the sixth. Relics on Railroad, the Danville Antique and Art Fair is September fourth and fifth. So that's Labor Day weekend. And the Devil Mountain Run, instead of being in the spring, it's been moved um to September eighteenth. Um, the Run for Education is still in October. That's on the ninth and Danville Fall Fest. Um, that's with all the street vendors and everybody downtown on the weekend of October twenty-second, twenty-third. And of course, Veterans Day on November eleventh. And I think one of the the really cool events, the lighting of the Old Oak Tree on November twenty-fifth. Robert, what's your top two favorite events?
Well, I gotta go with the car shows uh downtown, because that really does bring a lot of people downtown and I appreciate that. And and lighting of the Old Oak Tree, you know, I I think it's somewhere about three hundred and ninety years old and probably still doing pretty well. Um, that's probably my, my next most favorite event. Cause once again, Christmas time, the holiday spirit. I I I sort of appreciate that period of time.
Great. And you know, I I echo that. I love them. I know we go to all of these events. Um, they're great family traditions and when my kid's coming back into town, uh, it's either the Fourth of July Parade or the Lighting of the Tree, because that is family. So.
Well, Fourth of July Parade is in a category all by itself. And we get about fifteen to forty thousand people coming downtown. But I appreciate our downtown business. We got Marshall Harmon. We've got Jim and Chris Edlin. I mean, you go down the list of restaurant owners, Darren and and the LoCondo folk. I mean, they're all passionate. They're all contributing to our downtown and they're all making the downtown a much better place to be. And I and I appreciate all their input as well.
Great. Well, with that, um, appreciate everybody listening in today. Um, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. Check out the library after sunset on Saint Patrick's Day. Um, also.
I thought that was a big secret.
But it is. Um, I'm not saying what it is, but check out also the um um Museum of the San Moon Valley on the same evening um after sunset. Um, that's the depot there on Prospect and Row Run. And with that, um, we'd like to wish you um a wonderful weekend. It looks like it's gonna be cool for the next week. Let's hope for more rain. And again, Robert, to you and your family, thanks for everything you do in the council.
I appreciate everything you do, Mayor. I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you, guys, and have a wonderful weekend. Take care.
Bye.